What's the criminal laws of this state? That you will not be influenced in any matter on account of personal bias or prejudice. That you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the constitutions and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith. And that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and execute the duties of your office as a law enforcement officer according to the best of your skills, abilities, and judgment. So help you God.
Thank you.
This is Joyce.
Why don't you watch your phone?
I can't.
You know who I am. They've seen me a lot.
You gotta get in there.
I don't know where to look.
There's the best place to go. Just get in there.
(inaudible)
I want that. I can find out.
(inaudible)
Why don't you watch your phone?
I can't.
You know who I am. They've seen me a lot.
You gotta get in there.
I don't know where to look.
There's the best place to go. Just get in there.
(inaudible)
I want that. I can find out.
Look right here.
Congratulations.
Well, how been while?
Yes. Thank you a lot.
He's like meal boy.
Oh, I know. You're fine.
Now you can put it on your face.
Hey, Campbell, do one more. You got it for Donald. Okay. Everybody smile. We'll put it on Facebook. Or infamous.
Just turn off the coven.
(inaudible) Glad to see you young gentlemen there stepping up after their police force from town's far. Makes me feel good about insight. (inaudible) Got a figure already. Thanks. Glad to see you young gentlemen there stepping up after their police force from town's far. Makes me feel good about insight. (inaudible) Got a figure already. Thanks.
Thank you. I hope we did right.
Okay. Continue on presentation of revaluation. Update, Rita Miller, Alany Tax Collector, Joshua Gibson, Vincent. I know I'm not sure what the last thing makes. Revaluations. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. So I'm Rita Miller, I'm the tax administrator, and I'm here with Joshua. And he is the regional project supervisor for Vincent Evaluations, who we contracted to do our 2027 reevaluation. So we wanted to come to mine and just give the town council an update on where we are. We will do this anytime we have life course to during this process. And this is only mailed out until the first of 2027, but appraisers are out in the field working now. And so Joshua has prepared a presentation for you folks to note. Any questions afterwards that you have?
Joshua, when you open, pick a moment.
Yeah, I'll give you thumbs up. All right, so my name's Joshua. I'm the regional project manager with Vincent Evaluations. I oversee a few counties out here in western North Carolina, and this is the tax offices that any means of them they may have. So I'm here to talk about what is reappraisal, why do we do it, where we are with this current one, and I also have some examples of what the market is currently doing as well for us. So in total, there are a little under fifteen thousand parcels in Allegheny County. There's one thousand one hundred and eleven specifically in the town of Sparta. Of those fourteen thousand, we've expected two thousand seven hundred and sixty-six so far thus today. We had started back in May of this year, and we estimate to be completed by January of What is reappraisal? Reappraisal is a process in which all real property in the county is appraised at its current market value as of a particular date. In this case, for Allegheny County, that date will be one one, two thousand and twenty-seven. Real property includes both land and buildings. It can include residential properties, commercial properties, agricultural and industrial estates. The reason we have reappraised properties is the state law requires that we do it at least once every eight years. Allegheny County is on a six-year cycle. The point of reappraisal is to distribute the overall tax burden equitably based upon current market conditions and market values. Market value is the most probable price a property will bring in an open and competitive market, is what a willing buyer and a willing seller would bring, while neither are under arrest. Over time, those properties will change in value. These can change based on location, desires, amenities, things of that nature. The tax department themselves does not create market value. Rather, we analyze the market and see what it's doing to establish models to set values for these properties. When will reappraisal occur? Reappraisal takes effect January first, two thousand twenty-seven. As mentioned before, we started data collection in May of this year. We're currently developing the schedule of values, which is a legal document that shows how we did a reappraisal, what our base rates are, how we can maintain assistance going through the county, appraising different property types. The two thousand twenty-seven reappraisal notices will be mailed to all Allegheny County owners in the beginning of twenty twenty-seven, sometime around February and March. We have four basic steps to a reappraisal. The first step is data collection. That's actually what we're going through right now. You may see a couple of folks driving around from the fiscal characteristics of the property, from marketing on to sales analysis and modeling, where we help establish base rates and models for the market values. From there, we'll develop our schedule of values and have it approved by the authority commissioners. And then from there, the taxpayers will have the rights to appeal the property values that they may dispute. Where our values come from. Properties and sales are analyzed to help determine current property conditions, market areas, typical sale prices for properties. Some variations can be determined from the outside of the property, whether it has a cathedral ceiling, if the bonus room over garage is finished. So the challenge then is to develop tables that correlate with the fiscal property data to help us predict values for all of the properties, even the ones that may have not The reason we do it this way, we're responsible for appraising about fifteen thousand individual properties all at one time. This is referred to as mass appraisal. Most major taxing jurisdictions face similar changes or challenges. There is no practical way to appraisal or simple number of properties similar to the way that a fee appraiser made. So we have industry standard methods developed for us to produce property values that are reasonable and reliable. Unlike single property appraisals, mass appraisal can include an appeals process to help us address valuation concerns for the property. Ways that we know what's right. Appraisal techniques include statistical tools used to help measure the accuracy of an appraisal. The most common tool we use is a sales ratio. We help calculate this by taking the assessed value of the property, dividing it by the sales price, and that will give us the ratio. Our ideal ratio is one, knowing that the sale price lines up with our assessment, that we've assessed it with the current market value of the property is. In different areas, we see different changes. In broad terms, we see evidence that market values around the county have changed in different ways since 2021, the last reappraisal. Some areas in the county have seen an increase in market values, while others may experience an increase in value. Some areas may have changed a lot, while may have, some have changed very little. The following examples are examples of sales that we found in this calendar year specifically in the town of Sparta. So the first sale that we found was a nineteen sixty-eight built house, assessed in twenty-one for ninety-four thousand one hundred, sold in May twenty-five for two hundred and twenty-six thousand, indicating an increase of one hundred and forty-one percent. The next property was a nineteen sixty-four built house, assessed in twenty-one for a little under ninety-one thousand, sold in May of this year for two hundred and five thousand, indicating an increase of one hundred and twenty-six percent. Here we have a nineteen seventy-two built house, assessed in twenty-one for a hundred and twelve thousand, sold on Valentine's Day this year for two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, indicating an increase of one hundred and thirty-eight percent. And our final example, nineteen sixty-six built house, assessed in twenty-one for a hundred and eighty thousand, sold in May of this year for four hundred thousand, indicating an increase of one hundred and twenty-two percent. Those are our sale examples. I'd be happy to answer any questions and concerns that anyone may have. I wanted to add, this year, this reevaluation, we're doing something a little bit different, and we're mailing out a postcard, a flyer, about two weeks before the appraisers are in your area, so that our citizens know they're coming, systems are wearing a validation. So we wanted to let them know that. Also, if you have locked gates into your property, or it's posted, the appraisers will lock the doors to the property. We need to contact the tax office to set that up, or go with the appeal process to get your revaluation notice. This is both for safety of the appraisers and our citizens, so we want to be fully transparent of what we're doing. And one thing that Josh said, it's all about being fair and equitable. It's about spreading the burden of thought the county government needs to operate among all property owners and all property classes. If I can answer any questions you have?
I think it's interesting, Rita, and Josh, that just those examples you gave us shows that when some homes are sold for a large amount of money, then that is going to affect the value of other homes, and that's just what it is. And some folks, you know, may not get that correlation totally, but when you do that as you saw in those examples, that is, that will affect other homes. I really think these homes have been used, they don't claim to sell them, but that's how the system works, and that's how the system works. And we have found a better one so far, but that gives a real good example of what these homes still have, does affect the value of them.
And there are different deferal programs that the taxpayers may seek out to see if they qualify for.
Right.
There's the elder maintenance program, the senior veterans program, resident use program, deferment for agricultural farmers that help incentivize funding and keep that going because we need that. There's also the circuit breaker act, which helps with the deferment of values as well. So there's different things that the tax office can offer to help alleviate some of these concerns that the taxpayers may have.
And they can get that information right at the tax office, as you see. So that's actual information.
Yes, and we're available if there's any groups out there that want us to come speak. We can do more than that. I'm set. And I think based on our schedule, particularly with the town of Sparta, based on our production, we should estimate being doing our inspections in the actual town sometime between August and October, just a friendly heads up of when you guys start to see us kind of around.
This year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number seven, contract approval. Let's speak to that.
So the two contracts approval that you have on here, the first one is the one for Mr. Dan McMillan, I think at least you still have that. This individual writes off the grants for the police department, searches for the grants. I had Peggy review the contract, make sure there was no changes, had the police department also review the contract, make sure there were changes. There's no change, he's not asking for an increase in price. Normally, we end up paying him less than what he's contracted for, because we don't use him for that for the books, and he doesn't charge us for that. But his job is to search grants, write grants, and if he gets us a grant and he gets paid, he does get us a grant, then we don't pay anything for him. At this point in time, that contract is up for renewal for this fiscal year to keep him on a tamer, seeing to get his contracts. The second contract is ABC contract with the police department. I saw the by general statute, they're supposed to provide a huge amount of funding to the police department as well as the town. This is for educational purposes, for alcohol education. We, again, this is a one-year contract, normally they'd be three years, this is a one-year contract. If you remember, a couple of meetings ago, we agreed that we would allow them to do minimal contributions with the expectation that they're going to have their new building and be moved in by December, and then next year, they're going to go back to full contribution percentage to both the town and the police department. So that's why this is a one-year contract for this year only. And those are the two. I want to get any questions that you have?
How much is the contract?
For the ABC?
Yeah.
I think it's like one point seven five percent is what they're paying us. Maybe I'll check it, it should be in here.
Is that the same?
He has gotten less than a thousand dollars, but we have received almost a hundred thousand dollars, so he is not expecting.
I'm checking. Oh, you were talking about Mr. Miller, the grant writer. I thought you were talking about the ABC board.
Well, actually, both of them.
The ABC board one, I told you one more cent five percent, I was incorrect, it's five percent. And that's what they've been getting, they've been getting the low amount of tax coverage because the prior administration had approved of it, but I brought it to you this year. I wanted you to approve of it before we went that route. But the situation is this is a one-year contract, only just like the towns, what they give to the town will only be a one-year, and that has to return back to the full contribution.
Only question I've got is the grant writing, it says as of July first, twenty twenty-four. I'm assuming we're going to change that to a five, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. But that's just a top one.
Okay. Just making sure.
I make a motion for both.
I'll say it.
Got a motion, got a second, any discussion? All in favor? So. Okay. Number eight, got ABC's board approval. Mr. Allen White is currently on that board, and his term is up, three-year term. And I guess Allen wants to be back on board again, I guess?
Yes, that is correct. And at this point in time, it would be council decision to appoint him or to replace him.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Allen back on the board.
I'll say it, thank you.
Motion, second, any discussion? All in favor? All in. Okay. See him again in another three years later. Budget amendment, number three.
I'll let our finance officer speak a little more to this, but we are making this be the last final budget amendment this year, just to kind of set directly the council on, and I was speaking to Councilman McGree earlier. Our budget amendment, we've done pretty good with it, this will be our last one. We've ended up, if I'm correct, Peggy correctly, we took the zero from the four hundred and ninety-one thousand from the general fund balance, is that correct?
As of today, yes.
As of today, so.
We have used it, not saying we might not have to pick up fifty or sixty thousand dollars, but we did not use the whole for her to.
Which is, if you remember from our budget discussions, our objective every year is always to move, to take zero from the general fund balance and allow that to build up. And we are doing that, and of course, we're still have to wait for any nice minute bills for the twenty twenty-three fiscal year to come in that have to be paid. Some vendors come send those in, they're a little late, but once that book gets buzzed out, we should have our auditors coming in next month.
They're coming in, please.
To start the process of auditing. So we should hopefully, we should, as Peggy said, no more than fifty to sixty, if anything, we have to take out of the year general fund balance, which is a great amount compared to the four hundred and ninety-one thousand that was initially asked.
That's good. Question I have before you is the departmental budget amendment. I just took it from different departments so that you would be aware, and I also gave you a copy of the spreadsheet that I use to justify my taking this money from different departments and put them in administration. I took from contingency and economic development for the thirty thousand that needed to go into administrative, administration expenditures, which is thirty thousand, but it did not change the total balance of the budget. And in the water and sewer, I did twenty-seven thousand to the administration expenses, and I took, we had excess money in the water authority, what we paid the water authority. So I took that money from the water authority that was left up, we had like sixty-seven thousand on the bill, but I took twenty-seven thousand of that to make that budget whole. The general fund budget stayed unchanged, and the water and sewer budget stayed unchanged. So we still are at three million, thirty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars for the general budget, and for water and sewer, we're still at two million, one hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars.
And counsel, just to kind of let you know how we handle the general fund balance versus that are individual department balances. When we pass a budget, each department has a specific allocated amount, but I, to make each department have that allocated amount, we did have to do full sum from general fund balance. As the year goes through, and as we progress through every quarter and every month, we look at the revenue, the percentage of revenue, percentage of expenditures. As we get closer, if one department is not using a specific fund item, it gets moved around to a different department that may need some to prevent from having to pull from that general fund balance, which is our rainy day funds, or that would help us if we ran into an issue. As I told, our town staff had a town staff meeting with our, all of our staff last Thursday. The objective with the general fund balance, and both on the town side and on the enterprise side, and I made this go with, I told Peggy this is a go, and I told the entire staff that way the entire staff knows the town's objective, my objective is that the town have every year a general fund balance untouched of five million dollars, and an enterprise fund balance untouched of three million dollars we carry over every year. That would help us should we ever run into an issue where we have a large expense that we have to pay for, we can avoid having to take out loans, or it gives you a significant amount to show as cannibal it's the town that we need to take out a loan with the LGC or any other general fund bank.
Also, we had to get a report that the council had designed for the enterprise fund because we did not do as well as far revenue wise last year. This is all uncollected amount. At this point, for this year, we may put over four hundred thousand dollars into the water and sewer fund, which will help offset what we had arrived to the LGC last year.
Do you have any questions?
I didn't. I'm pretty much. No, I was just going to say thank you for keeping.
I am too. Can you elaborate just a little on what you said about the four hundred thousand back into the water?
Our revenue exceeded our expenses this year.
And I want to go back, that had something to do with. And I'm gonna go back, that had something to do with something you found in that, correct? If I remember that from a previous meeting, something you found in the water authority.
Yeah, it, it goes back to um, we, we have, there's a formula that has to be utilized in both towns to be charged the correct amount for the water usage itself. So if you remember during the, when I first started in the fall, we had several late night events for our, our maintenance staff that were working late fixing water things. Uh, and if you remember, we started uh reducing our consumption. Well, when you plug the formula and you use the formula like it should be, it's the one that I gave you during the budget in that big long spreadsheet. You, we are paying per the gallons that the town consumes, what comes to that state meter. Um, where it has, the prior town manager from the town of Independence, uh Laura and I have discussed it. There was a episode, for whatever reason, the towns went away from that formula. We're not really sure why, what the decision was, but it was more of a, we're just gonna allocate so much money to the, to the V C W A. Uh, the town manager that they currently have, Kathy Neeson, and Laura was also on board with this, and myself have agreed. And we understand the contractual agreement is we must follow the formula. Regardless of how much part of the town uses, the water must be charged per the gallon that comes out of the V C W A. So by doing that, we are accurately capturing the water, we're actually paying what we're supposed to be paying, we're not paying more. Nor are we paying less than what we should be paying, which has allowed us to save a lot of money um, from what was originally budgeted into that. And then the work that our water and sewer personnel have been u- using, have been doing, I'm sorry, with preparing leaks, um, the, the late overtime that they've had to say to do all this uh repair work. And the aggressive, we get a leak, we fix it, we don't patch it, we replace whatever's broken. That's how our water consumption can improve.
And add on top of that, uh, hopefully here in the near future, we'll have meters, new meters all the way through town. That should hopefully, I know it's gonna be an expense upfront, but should help, will be savings also throughout the years.
That is correct, so when these new meters come in, we're gonna be able to actually um capture the, the water, because it's all brandy meters, these are not gonna be used meters. Each one of these meters is coming off this empty line and going into the water, coming to the town as part. Um, they're gonna be set up with the proper M C C communication channel, and they will start capturing. And they're gonna be more accurate in format. Uh, and a prime example of that, we did have a resident several months ago that called and requested a meter be changed because she said, I've lived here since nineteen seventy, seventy-something. She said that meter has never been changed, and she felt that she was having some misreadings in there. Um, and she probably was right, you're looking at a meter that's, you know, forty, fifty years old. Um, so it was swapped out for a new meter, and her readings did change, and that, so. We are, um, these new meters, we project that there may actually be some unhappy people because they're gonna see higher usage coming out of theirs. Um, then there's gonna be some people that probably be happy because they're still able to use it.
Very good, thank you.
And, and Mr. Butron, I think uh we can speak for all the town citizens that we're so grateful that you, the managers at Independence, decided to follow the uh formula and decided to run this like the business that it was set up to be, so that we're paying. Uh, it's just unbelievable to me, shocking, although I was not totally shocked, that it was such a haphazard approach in the past. But thank you for getting that straight from me.
You're welcome. Now, I won't take uh full credit on that, I will actually uh give Laura credit to Laura.
Well, I, I've said.
Before she's there, she, she did a lot. Yeah, of education, and um now I'm returning the favor to Ms. Neeson at the Independence and showing her the ins and outs of the V C W A, so that we can, and we both agree, this is, the V C W A is a business. And when we go to those board meetings, V C W A, we run that as a, as an enterprise. And it's separate of the town, what we both understand, the implications that the V C W A, everything does. It, it applies to the citizens, so. In essence, the decisions that her and I make only affect one town, the folks and the citizens of both counties.
And Mr. Butron, I think uh Mr. Green, you mentioned that back, once we get all of this fixed up, then we could realistically look at perhaps lowering our water rates to our citizens. That's sort of a long-range, maybe far in the sky kind of thing, but not totally, not totally out of the picture, it might happen. But at least we can keep from lowering it up on every year, if we have to pass.
Yeah, and, and one thing we are, I will continue to look into, and, and uh it's still on the uh, it's still a work in progress, what we're gonna do is the K O rate that we discussed, more than high users. Where once you use so much, that K O rate decreases. And the K O rate would be a variable that changes every year. Because that, um, if you also go from my current credit, K O rate then slower than what the V C W A charges.
Right.
But that is something that we will be looking at, that I'll be looking at, and I'm actually working with um with Kathy as, as well. So that, um, guiding her on her, with her.
I'll make a motion, improve motion, then.
I'll say it then.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Four oh. Thank you. Uh, this is where I added this, talking backstage with um June the twenty-fifth, the park committee met. And uh had several items there we talked about, and uh one of them was uh see if we could salvage the park stage. And uh the committee come up there with uh talking to Larry Woody, which does mobile home sales and is able to go block up, unmake mobile homes. And I contacted Mr. Woody there, and he took his crew over there, and they did an assessment of it. And um, he thinks that he can, he can go in there and, and reinforce the stage. He's gonna have to uh dig up old bushes in front of the, on the back of the stage and to dig those up. And, and he might run a new beam in there, but he can shore that up. And um, the stage will be good. Uh, the stage is covered, it's uh, all of the wood is still in good shape. And he seems to think there that more over four thousand dollars, he could bring it back and we can use it from now on. So I wanted to bring that up to council and see if there's any possibility that they're gonna do that to support the, the stage. And he sounded real positive in that. And if we decide we're gonna do that, he can get started on it next week.
The only question I have is, we're in the new fiscal year as of today, do we have that money?
So we don't really have any money allocated specifically to it because we didn't realize the nature of that stage until very late uh process of it. Um, the, the overall fixture for this stage is to demolish it and rebuild it. I think what um Mayor Prokam is, is requesting is a temporary fix. Um, and that's something we discussed because the, the Miles family that helped with the uh stage, with the stage construction itself, uh, Mr. Wayne Miles.
Yes, sir, yes.
Mr. Wayne Miles himself has, has made it clear, this stage is gonna be good for another year or two. Uh, with some work being done, and he said, second day, he said it's just bringing some support to the rear side of it. Uh, but there's a lot of untreated number that was utilized underneath the stage that cannot continue to be used long-term, so that stage would have to be um eventually demolished. I would say in more than two years from now. Um, we do not, regards to if there is money available for that, we do have some contingency money that we did your line up, with caution, um, that, I would caution exceeding the allocated four thousand that Mayor Prokam is suggesting. Um, just because you don't wanna, you don't put too much into the stage we're gonna have to tear down. We are going to be looking at um grants, and then we're gonna be matching grants uh for rebuilding the stage. Obviously, the stage um would be, it, it's something that a lot of people would like to keep from what I've, I've heard bits and pieces, uh, but that stage itself is not uh, not, not sound good for long-term.
Can we go ahead and get a price on rebuilding a new stage?
We can work on getting a price to rebuild a new stage. Uh, it goes back in the exact same location, which is a, uh, uh, something that uh Mr. Mayor Prokam has asked to keep there. There's gonna be a lot of work that really this one should have had down underneath it as well and around it. Um, but if, if we build a new one, it's gonna cost us a mu- a good amount of money, but if we build a new one, it's gonna be something that's gonna last for more than this one. Um, just because we don't really wanna get, if I'm correct, this one's probably twenty years old, is that correct?
Not quite yet.
Not, or young, but, we don't wanna get into rebuilding a stage every, I'll use, just use the magic number of twenty. It's rebuilding the stage every twenty years. Um, you, you really want something that you can get at least thirty, thirty to fifty years out of it for. And, and that is, when I say thirty to fifty, I'm referring to, you want something that uh, the, the concrete barriers of it are gonna actually, and you may go back and you may do some renovations, some, you know, some, some work to the outside to make it, to bring it up to the current view, whatever it wants to be, but you at least want the good bones of it for thirty to fifty years.
Which would include pressure treated lumber?
Pressure treated lumber or doing um steel.
Steel would be.
Or um, yeah, or, or concrete or something that's gonna be more weather resistant than, than the lumber.
Looks like to me, oh, this rebuilding of new stage would be uh two, three, four years down the road.
Yeah, and so rebuilding a new stage is not something, even if we apply for grants, it's still gonna take us uh a year to two years to get grants and for us to allocate money, and which we can do when we do the budget process. Like, we did this year for T D A, where we did thirty thousand for one specific project. If we wanted to pursue grants, like a fifty-fifty grant, say we wanted to do a, a hundred thousand dollar grant, um, then that would mean that we'd have to do fifty thousand. So we would start looking at our revenue sources early in October, see what we can get that money for that. But you're right, it's not gonna be something we're gonna do this year.
Well, to me, I, I'd say it, two, three years, it's something strange, I didn't think about that stage. I think there's, say, no, my front porch. But if it's something two or three years down the road, to me, a four thousand dollars, if there's any way that, you know, we could come up with the money or something, that three or four years, they still have the stage. To me, that would be worth that kind of, uh, worth four thousand dollars. Because when you're getting these grants and stuff, it may run into five years. I mean, who knows, but I, I don't know, like I said, I was thinking about that stage, and I don't wanna sit there and just actually fall down. And uh, maybe if we had to take it out of the budget or whatever, but four thousand dollars is not really that much money to keep people that can use it, it's safe, like Mike says.
And, and Mr. Butron, uh, about the T D A, their charter, they were set up by the general senior, by tourists. So we could go to them and ask them for money because the whole point, or not the whole, well, basically, the whole point is we're having all these programs and all these music shows, and this is to attract tourists, and this is for people to come. So it would not be out of the realm of the T D A's authority to give us some money to help rebuild the stage.
No, and we can look for those uh avenues, we can look for other partnerships um as well with various different organizations to, to assist with that. Um, we just, there, and, you know, the four thousand dollar is the, the figure that was given to uh Mayor Prokam. I would just, I, I don't wanna account, I, I would say that if we move forward with fixing the current stage for it to be usable for another year or two, or if we can get some grant information and pricing, we can start that process, I would strongly recommend the council set a cap on how much is the max we can.
And, and Mr. Butron, are we, what are our limitations on if we spend more than five thousand, or we spend more than?
Five thousand has to be put by council.
Uh, but we have to put out for bids if it's five?
No.
How much, how much would it be if we have to put out?
I think it's uh, I think our last uh one, we recently had adopted appropriation policy, I think it was ten thousand, I think about ten thousand we had.
But isn't there some state statute or some sort of?
Oh, seven, that's seventy-two thousand.
So, so we can go up five, uh, with that I have a pretty accurate basis?
Yes.
Well, Larry, of course, he is a contractor, a class of contractors. And he said that, that the floor on it is treated lumber. And he said, well, what needs to be done, he said, it needs to be uh, he'll take his back or his back, or backhoe or his machinery there and pull the stage back where it needs to be, and he's gonna add another girder underneath it. And uh, gonna put down, he's tied down, like they use mobile homes there to stabilize it. It goes into the ground, tied down. He said, as far as the wood, he says, it's covered, he said the wood will be there from now on, you know. Uh, now, I would like to see, see if we could patch that up and get a few more years out of it and give us a chance, all this, the, the grants and everything, which probably gonna be on the park recreational grants.
Yes.
It's a fifty-fifty grant, and that would give us opportunity to work towards that and maybe uh get somebody to design uh a new stage for that where we can get paint lined up or maybe replace that stage. But if we could get some more time out of it, I feel like it's worth it.
And the, the uh, I hope the, the government could help us look for recreation grants and stuff.
They can.
That's their, their, that.
Yeah, and, and they've already started looking for, for a couple of recreation grants, which they're the ones that told us most of those grants are gonna be fifty-fifty grants. I expressed that I, I figured that was the case from them. Um, but yes, that would, when I say place a cap, I would, what I refer to is um, you know, whether we, we set the cap at five, whether we set the cap at four, whether we set the cap at six. It's, I, I would recommend that council set a bar that says, you know, we don't need to put, you know, thirty thousand into the stage for another year or two.
I agree with that.
But it, it, we just need to set a reasonable cap to make that stage last another two years at the most, and then we start looking towards the other options. And we will, if uh council wants us to, to start planning on the rebuilding of a new stage, we will make that into an objective when we approach the appropriation preparation.
The only downfall I have with it is I hate to see skin five thousand now and turn out two years, we can use that five thousand for a new stage. I am in one hundred percent agreeance with all of you about, we need the stage, I love the city of state, stay there, but I mean, I, I would be more in agreeance as if we start tomorrow looking for somebody to notice a new stage. And I know that we're looking for grants, and we won't get all the help that we can get, but, you know, five thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, just the way I look at it.
Or six, or seven.
Of course, yeah, but, and I do agree with you a hundred percent on that because. Of course, yeah, but, and I do agree with you a hundred percent on that because you're opening up a can of worms right there. And first thing, it's four thousand, next thing you know, it's ten thousand, and the next thing you know, it's fifteen, and we still can't use the stage. So, yeah, I, I agree a hundred percent with the cap, so I just, uh, I don't know, I'm, I'm.
I, I see everyone's point certainly, and, uh, I think probably what we're carrying is, is, uh, they want people, everybody, and the committee wants this to be patched up so they can use it this summer. And, and this summer's already in July, so, uh, that's a consideration too, as, uh, Mr. Green just said. We throw six or seven into it, five, six or seven, uh, that we could use to replace, so that's a, a, a decision we would have to make. But that's, that's all points to ponder.
It, it is, um, uh.
Is the stage turned it out any of this for the rest of the summer?
So it was ready out for the Arts Council. We told them that they cannot use it. They did a temporary stage setup the other weekend. Uh, and I, I told them they could leave that stage set up overnight Saturday and take it down Sunday. Uh, there was another event that had the stage reserved as well, and they're, they were told that they couldn't use it as well. I cannot think of anything off the top of my head at this point in time.
So everybody that did have it reserved has already made other plans for the rest of the summer, basically what you're saying?
We told them to make other plans at this point in time.
So we're really not, if we don't fix it, temporarily fix it here the next day or two, there's no surprise to anyone that's got the, the stage running for the rest of this.
If we don't fix it next week, that is correct. No one has, and I told, um, Monica, who handles all our reservations, that the stage is not available for reservations this year unless we do some work to do it.
Uh, we just had to talk about the general fund and not touch that money. We're in a new fiscal year. So now I'm gonna ask the question that nobody wants to hear, is, is, is there money there for a new stage? By a budget, I mean?
There is money there for each stage.
Just, that's just, I'm asking, you know, I know we don't wanna touch it, but I was just saying.
No, and, and, and that's, that's the whole purpose of it. I mean, you, you wanna have something, you wanna have money built up for that because you're gonna have things, no one told us this time, you know, or, or when, before. No one told us that hurricanes are coming here and causing more damage, push a tree and cause the stage to dig back, all right? And we are entering hurricane season, am I correct?
Well, we are in the midst of that, sure.
We started, so we could have another one come through here, or we may not. But, uh, when it comes to rebuilding that stage, we're gonna make sure that we take preventive maintenance into consideration and the weather factors, because we do get rains, we do get ice, and we need to make sure that that, uh, stage is weathered properly moving forward. One runoff coming off that hill is a big issue. That's why I say that the new stage will require a lot of engineering to make sure that we don't have an issue with sort of the water.
And when you say that one for of engineering, then how much is that going to add to the cost? So if we could conceivably just take a hypothetical, we build it for thirty thousand dollars, are we gonna have to pay fifteen thousand dollars to have it engineered? Is it absolutely a requirement that we hire engineers to do it? Can we get people, uh, locally? I mean, we're not building a, a skyscraper. We're not building a new county office building. We're building a stage. So what are our statutory, uh, limits on, on, how, who do we have? Do we have to have some major engineering firm? It's not a, a very complex structure. So, so to keep the cost, uh, uh, to get a, a proper facility, a solid facility that'll last for most of us, probably gonna be on, uh, without having to spend a, a huge amount of money on engineering, which is a trap that we've fallen into in the past. So that's just a point that I like to throw out.
I think it's the reason that, that you, that engineering where it comes to be an issue is a small town like Sparta, I use, you know, as we're talking. We don't have an engineer on staff, but you do have other municipalities that are smaller like us or bigger than us. And they have their own engineers on staff to handle that. So for us, the issue has always been contracted engineers. Um, now, I'm not saying I'm gonna go out here and have an engineer tomorrow, but, um, no, there's no requirement that says that we have to deal with a large engineering firm. Um, as long as you have an engineer that will sign off on the paperwork, you have the correct contractors with correct lab, with your correct insurance requirements, um, you can do your, you can do your work on it, you can do your best.
That's what I wanted to hear.
When you get grant money, you gonna have to allocate your debt to something.
Yeah, now, there, if, if the grants are, now, if grants make any stipulations to maybe out, so that's what I'm saying about grants. Grant donors can make stipulations, we just have to make sure we get the stipulations. But to say that you would have to go with a engineering firm that, that charges, you know, thirty, forty percent of the price, you don't have to, you can shop engineers wherever you want.
I think the proper way would be, you know, to get a architect to draw you up something, send it to the engineer, and let them see what's gonna affect the building.
Yeah.
I think the proper way to do it.
Yeah, you could get you an, an architect, um, to, to design that for you, um, a- and, and then move from there. But it, back to the original stage itself, um, if you wanted to save it, I, my recommendation would be, um, five thousand dollars.
Really, he told me, he said it, he said it, I said, well, well, it costs as much as five thousand. He said, no. He said, no, it'd be a little over for me. And, uh, you know, I was concerned about the wood coming out. I was told that the wood used the, the proper wood out of it. And he said, uh, it's cut, it's just like a house there, you know, uh, it's gonna be okay, the wood is, is fine, I think. It just needs to be straight back up and reappointed.
But again, if there's somebody gonna use it the rest of the year, what's wrong? Um, I mean, just, that sounds like a wonderful short-term solution, but if we don't need a short-term solution, then look at a long-term solution, which is what we just said.
Yeah, and at this time, we, we told Arts Council it's not available, um, we don't have, and we're not reserving it for anybody else. So it, it's just, it's council decision, and I can let you know, I can start looking for, um, price to rebuild one, we can start looking for another one. And then if it looks like it's gonna be a three-year project, the council says, well, let's go ahead and spend that money to renovate it for next year, to fix it for next year, that's always an option. Um, but we can start looking, we can start shopping for a replacement without, without, um, allocating dollars at this point in time.
And does Regent Day, it used to be Regent Day, it's our country, uh, council governors, leading municipalities, do they not have any engineering services available to us at a better rate that we can tap into to do this sort of thing? Again, we're not building a huge thing. We're not rebuilding half the town. So would that be something to look into?
Well, there's also some local folks here too, that I'm sure they're busy anymore, help with us on the, on the drawing and the.
That's what I was trying to kinda get to, uh, in years past, it's how we got to hire engineers and architects and all these things. We're just picking this community to come up and say, well, we would've been happy to have, as long as they're certified, as long as they got a stamp.
Well, just being a small project, I don't think you go to, if, if you're, do we have to go with a large firm or a guild? I don't believe you have to go with a large firm like we do.
Well, I don't believe we do either. That's kinda what I was trying to get to.
We can go with a local engineer to do that, yeah. But, um, and so it's, that's another option, is if, if it's not, um, we already told people, if you wanna hold off and us teach you some prices for the, for next meeting, and if you check the timeframe, we can. And if you decide that you want to do, uh, at that point in time, if I say you're looking at two years, uh, three years, and council wants to put the money into it, then that's fine, I mean, however you wanna do it.
Another question I've got is, is what, is what's sitting there right now, is there any danger to the, the way it's sitting right now?
No, it's, it's not, no, we, we don't have any weight on it. We're not using it. The, the concern was, um, you, if you got up and you walked around out of something.
Right.
Um, but the concern was how much weight would we put on it? And the continuous use of the stage itself, um, for multiple events. You don't wanna run into an issue where it, it just continues to degrade. If we noticed any shifting or if we noticed something that just looked off on the stage, we were getting inspected, um, and we need to tear it down, we would tear it down.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it be a good idea to, to put some barriers, some ropes changed, something? Because even if it's not being used by, for events, then there's still kids, there's people playing and all these things in part. So can, would it be a good idea to, to, uh, limit the access for liability reasons?
I don't think so, and I was actually looking at, there's been some new bills passed this year on disaster relief. And if I remember right, it was related to Hurricane Helene, why we have the tree fall. So I don't know if we have anything available there, but what is blocking it from the general public right now?
Nothing right now.
Caution tape.
So, that's what I'm saying, we need to.
Any signs up that warn people?
There are signs on there that says the stage is off limit and the town, and then we put signs that stage is off limit for use. Um, and, you know, if you're on the stage, assuming ours wants to be by yourself. So we're warning that the stage is not gonna be safe.
Not to be folksy, but if I don't want my cows to go somewhere, I put up a fence.
That's kinda what I think.
And, and we've got people and children playing and not sending anybody with intentions initially, but if we don't want people on the stage, we need to put a fence around it.
Well, the other thing is there's attractive nuisance laws in the state of North Carolina, which means if something looks fun to a kid, like a trampoline or a swimming pool,
There you go.
You're responsible for that, so I would feel better if we had something, a fence around it or we fixed it so it's not dangerous.
Right, I'm, I'm actually.
Because four thousand dollars may be a good chunk of money, but it's not the, going to make or break us. There, if we got a lawsuit because some child fell and got hurt or climbed up on or in that stage, that's some issues too.
Yes, and, and not to, to, but I mean, it's just reality, obviously liability. So if you don't want anybody on the stage, we need to have barriers so they can't get on the stage because you're not headed by Washington to avoid.
Well, if they ain't cut them willow makers out that tree over there, they said nobody'd be around it anywhere, cause.
Right.
Didn't we have here about a month ago, didn't they wanna fall out and hurt, hit a lady, but wasn't no hurt, didn't hurt her or something?
Trees cut out.
The old dead wood up in top of that tree over the stage right there, or call them willow makers. They, when I, first time we walked down there, Mike, we kinda talked about them when I was on, about they are a bunch of dead. If you notice the jobs there, a bunch of dead. And I think, uh, where that, that, there's one fell out that tree. And actually Megan talked about it one time, was going, how them trees cut down and that tree up there, and I've had that tree cleaned up. If you look up in it, there's a lot of dead wood. That's, uh.
Good for them.
We've, uh, we did a lot of trees thrown in the back of the fall. Um, we had, um, who raised energy to go out there and help us with a lot of the creek and that. But we, we took down a, a lot of the, the issues. Now, that doesn't mean that some of these names aren't gonna die throughout the year. As I do.
Well, they might done, done, done that. I, I didn't, I didn't look that though, but I went for the last year that was.
When we took down the tree, the side of the road, we cleared out a bunch of, uh, trees.
So would at least say, say that, uh, kinda table this until the next meeting and let him just see kinda what kinda timeline we're looking at as far as, um.
And cost, time and cost.
Moving on to a, a brand new stage.
Time and cost.
Well, there again, you, you gonna have to tell somebody to draw up something and specify how it's gonna be built. Or you can tell them the cost of it, you know?
If, if you want us to start getting prices, we'll start getting prices from, you know, you can make the age.
Age form, just saying.
On how you go, um, we'll look at, we can always look at, um, fence rentals. Looking around it.
What is the cost of that? I'm wondering.
Uh, I will, I will get that information and I will send it to everybody.
Cause the fence around it is gonna cost four thousand dollars.
That's what I'm thinking, so.
And, and I don't know, you know, I don't know, but I, I know, as I say, if I've got cows on a warm supply, I put up a fence. If you got kids and you're warm supply, you put up a fence. Not throwing shade on the children, the kids will be kids. If I was a kid and I was aware, I would be playing on the stage and getting up there and dancing and putting on my own concerts.
I tell you.
Well, now we have something planned for the state.
I would, I would, I'm saying.
You're gonna fuck a fence around it, that's gonna cost you four thousand dollars.
What, what I was thinking more on was to fence it so that they could not climb up on it, get up on the stage. Put some sort of barriers or, or not necessarily a fence, I mean, that's what I was thinking, is to keep them off of it, but.
I'd say, just guessing, four thousand dollars, looking at fencing, and the pass, four thousand dollars, it may be cheaper to fix the stage.
Well, and that's what we don't know. So I think Josh said, get us prices and let's make a decision after no more.
My whole theory is, Mike, is it, you know, I understand he's a general contractor, but also I understand building construction that, you know, you start opening stuff up, you don't know exactly what you're gonna run into. So that five thousand, what happens next month whenever he comes back and says, well, I ran into this and I ran into that, and now I need five more thousand. The next thing you know, we're in here asking for twenty-five thousand, just, and I'm, you know, hopefully that would happen, but we never know.
Just going along, under total.
And, and, yeah, I, I respect.
And we appreciate him, appreciate you getting busy.
He's been, uh, you know, he's been, uh, making a lot of progress.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Moms are home during, he knows that.
Oh, I agree, I agree a hundred percent with that.
I'd say he didn't know that price very far.
So we're gonna table it, we consider you go around and run about this, we're gonna table it, uh, as Josh mentioned, for the next meeting, get some more figures, so it makes some sort of a, a, a decision.
Well, I mean, in all honesty, this is below the threshold of us having to vote on it.
It is, I mean, if, uh.
That's why you make a big vote.
Yeah, I would say this, if it's gonna cost us more than four thousand dollars for a fence around it, and it's gonna cost us four thousand, I, I would say that if, if we enter an agreement with, with them to fix it, we don't repay for it. Um, or, you know, it's, it has to be a contractor agreement, he has to give us a, a quote for it, and that's what he's gonna put it. Cannot do anything more than that. It's, uh, you know, if, if you can't fix it for what he said, or that's a, a five thousand dollars, that, that's all in.
So it sounds to me like we need to leave it in our town manager's hands.
Uh, but I can, I can discuss this with them. If we are under five thousand dollars, then we can fix it for them.
But you gotta know the majority of the board is kinda leaning to don't spend more than five thousand dollars.
I will be under five thousand, we're not gonna, not, not do more than five thousand. Because fencing is gonna cost us, I'm trying to, looking at here, but we're gonna have to, they're gonna have to call me as a quote. But we, you're looking at long-term fencing for a year or two, it's gonna cost us money.
Well, in, in many kind of, we're gonna do get done, so if they're not finding up there, by myself.
And I would just sell tickets so we could come up with that five.
Well, you know, if I didn't get up to do a show, it's probably very expensive.
He said, uh, he said he starts earlier next week or something, I mean, so, I mean, we, you know, this is next there to truly go, so we'll have, whichever way we're gonna go with it, so.
Yeah, and I, I'll, I'll make sure the council knows which way we go, uh, but, yeah, we could, I, I could be under five thousand, the council will.
I'm good with that.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, we're leaving it to the manager's.
Do we make a motion on that or we just, uh, just, uh, uh?
Just, we're not really gonna, we're not going more than five thousand, we'll just, we don't have to make a motion, it's fine. It would be no different than.
So it's gonna try to see if we can fix it.
A general consensus.
Yeah, general consensus will be fine to, to try to get fixed or, or blocked off, whichever we're gonna be the chief of.
Okay, you gonna, like, you gonna call or?
Yes.
Or I can call or you? Well, I can call Larry, you can talk to him, and if I talk to him. But I feel pretty good, and he told me that actually, uh, it wouldn't be exactly like it needed to be built to start with.
Well, that's, um, sort of probably, that's probably a four dollar concern.
What I'll do, just so that you're all aware, is I'll, I'll call, um, Larry, and I'll call Mr. Miles, and I'll have him both come by the office. Mr. Miles is, uh, I think a contractor or something. And, you know, Mr. Miles is familiar with, with what his father wanted done. And Larry obviously wants to work on it, and I'll have this discussion with him, and, um, we'll just kind of lay the rules and say, here's what's gonna happen. You want the stage fixed, here's where, where the rubber meets road, and this is what you're gonna do to get it fixed. Or they come down.
And we'll, all that folks know by the next meeting, when my car's over there.
I'm ready to sell tickets.
Josh is gonna help me, he gonna, he gonna, I mean, he gonna win straight, man, I don't believe it.
I think everyone in town will come. Get rid of the money budget, she's in.
That is, that starts under me. All right.
All right, moving on.
Want to?
I think we made that today.
All right, the manager's report. Uh, council, just a couple of things, we, uh, two things actually. The first one is gonna be, uh, as you're aware, we have applicants, we, we opened up applications for the, uh, utilities, public utilities director. This time we have four applicants, that's, that is an open and secure position. We are, I am gonna request, uh, at least two council members, that now that you decide amongst yourselves who would like to participate in that interview process, um, it is a, it's a panel process where, um, you're just asked some questions and, uh, then you'll give me your information and, um, before we make a decision on that, um, department. But I just wanna give you a heads up, and let you know that I will let y'all decide who wants to, uh, take a day to come down here and, and read some questions and write some stuff down.
How we have to do there, uh, having a more flexible schedule similar to, we need to, we should want to, it's two of you, I want to, I don't want.
I can help you on Tuesdays or Thursdays.
Okay.
I wouldn't mind being a part of that either, just coming from eleven years ago, and that stuff, I don't.
Right, well, if you, you guys wanna do it, I'll bow out, y'all.
Josh, you go ahead.
Can't have three. Now, y'all do it, I, I was just.
You, you, you and Josh do it, if you.
I'm fine, yeah, I'll, I'll.
Josh should do it, or you know, I saw.
I know.
I don't know.
You got a tight schedule, won't you?
So the, the other thing is, um, we, we did, and they want to bring out, we did have a issue with the wastewater treatment plant last week, um, with the discharge itself, uh, and just so that everyone's aware, our SPR tank, which is the holding tank, which is the first tank that's meant to be poured down when the construction phase begins, our SPR tank has three pumps in it that fill it. Those three pumps, and, and that tank doesn't do anything, it just sits there and allows everything to settle. And the way that it's, it works is all the solids, everything will settle to the bottom, all the water is gonna go to the top, and then it transfers it over. Those pumps failed, so it wasn't able to transfer from the holding tank to the other tank that, um, that's supposed to be doing its work before it goes to the rest of the process. So we did end up having to reach out to, uh, contractors to get a pump, because our other option was coming out of South Carolina, and it was going to, they're having to drive up here, they're gonna be up here about midnight, to look at the tank before they can determine what side pump they needed, and then they were gonna have to drive probably back to South Carolina and find the pump and get it back to us. So we actually reached out to a contractor, uh, we actually reached out to Lock Lane, because we knew they had a pump from where they done our lift stations in the past. And we, we got them to come up here, and we've got that pump. All said and done, we ended up having to purchase two new pumps, um, and we ended up having to purchase two new pumps, and we had to, and we got one pump rebuilt. But that allowed that, um, tank to still stay alive for another, um, year or so while we get, while we get through the process of clearing everything out, and, and it gets forty taken down, then we'll have those pumps for now. The pump that was able to be rebuilt, we ended up having to, well, I'll step back. The goal was not to purchase any new pumps, because obviously these pumps are dedicated to one thing only, and that's it, and we're not gonna use them in the future. We could never, the, the person that was fixing it, that was gonna tear the pump down, had not got into it, had not got into it. And we were on, I think, our fourth or fifth day of using that, the pump from contractors, we finally said, you know, just, just get two pumps, we don't need three, we just need two pumps, we're not gonna take a third pump. The third pump is always your, your high, high water or, or wet well alarm, which means the water has reached its maximum point, that it's supposed to be in the kitchen. The vendor that was gonna break into the pump to look at it, when they first got to it, they realized the problem was the bearing had fallen out. They were ever put the bearing back in and fix the pump, and that's in one hour. So now we're in there with three pumps, but just wanted that you be aware that that's happened. We are, we have sent our stuff off to be tested, we, I, I contacted the wastewater ORC, and I informed him that, uh, he needs to keep me updated, and that of course, he is responsible for ensuring that the EQ remain updated on it. He said testing, the daily testing of the material was still passing, um, and we were actually, it failed right in the process. We're sending samples off, we have to send samples off every so often to, uh, to be tested by the. So we'll find out if there was any violations, we'll know when those are going to come back. But we did want you to know that, um, we are aware of it, and we did receive a complaint on it. And I had the ORC of the wastewater treatment plant speak with the, uh, with the person they called in to complain about it. So they, they could be informed as soon as possible. The next thing is, I spoke today with, uh, McGill, they should be reaching out to, with Lock Lane on Thursday to get all the information that they want them, I did speak with Lock Lane today. Um, and then basically, I, I expressed to them that what I want is, I want the base bid, which is the SPR tanks, the mechanical screening system, and everything that comes in that SPR system. I told them, I said, I want you to come to the table with why you're charging what you're charging for each individual item. And then McGill, I expressed to them that we're gonna take that information, and I want to start plugging stuff that we don't need out. There's no point in putting money into something that we can go without at this point in time, if we can, um, make sure that we can get what we need. Our priority is SPR systems, because that's the breast mother of this wastewater treatment plant. And we will come out with SPR systems that work. If we have to continue to do mechanical screens, we'll continue mechanical, I mean, um, manual screens, we'll continue to do a manual screen. So when we go down into the negotiation phase, each individual component is gonna be broken down. The plan is, and I've expressed this to McGill, and I got a response back from Doug, um, about an hour or so after I put this email. Next week, we're to sit down and have this discussion, um, that they ought to give us a breakdown of every individual item. And the intent is that, and I've, I've laid a deadline for them, to make sure I carry it for a deadline. And yes, I know, I made your schedule for you, I listened, the, uh, I made a deadline on July twenty-first. I would like to have a council meeting, so that we can move on the project and move forward with the construction phase, as I advise them that I would like to get into the demolition phase well before we get into baseball.
Sounds good.
And that is where we are at that, and then I'm gonna let Ms. Mary speak to you about the, uh, the property that we had questions on with the meeting.
I looked up some lien law to make sure and kind of see if we worked out the things. And I do not bring the dates with me, but lien law in North Carolina is first to perfect or the first to file. So when we filed regarding the asbestos of the property, and we cleaned that up, and we brought a lawsuit, we were before the property was sold through the tax foreclosure. So I believe based on my research of law, the lien survives, so. As long as it's been perfected, which I believe it has been, I think that that goes along to the new owner of the property. And from what I understood, and you're giving me a clue, like I'm crazy.
No, no, I'm, I'm just listening, I don't wanna leave that to you.
Okay, there's a piece of property.
No, I know what you're talking about, I'm, I'm just taking it as being, I'm not saying you're crazy, I'm just.
But in North Carolina, basically, we are a rights state, which means whoever gets to the courthouse first wins. So when we file a lawsuit, and when we say that money is owed to us, and we have filed that lawsuit, and we have some sort of judgment showing that we are actually owed that money, then that's perfected. So whoever files first or perfects first, a claim in North Carolina actually has the claim out there. So when a piece of property is foreclosed on, whether it be in a tax foreclosure or an event foreclosure, or if you are a judgmentment creditor and you execute on the debt and the property end up being sold, whatever happens, the debts that occur first have to be paid first. So, for example, this is maybe the easier way to think about it. If you have a first lien and a second lien on a piece of property, you're a bank. And Bank A has a deed of trust, and then Bank B has a line of credit for the same owner. Well, if Bank B forecloses on that line of credit, Bank A still has that deed of trust. So if somebody bids or buys a piece of property, then that deed of trust, that first deed of trust is going to the piece of property that is law. So that's why in North Carolina, it's a good idea to have an attorney perform a title search for you, and why it's a good idea to get title insurance when you buy a piece of property. So when you buy a piece of property at a foreclosure sale, for example, where there's a tax foreclosure, and you go and you bid on that piece of property, you are bidding in regards to whatever deeds of trust or liens or anything that have priority over whose foreclosure. Because every real estate transaction I've ever done, where a bank is wanting someone money, they want a title search performed. And we have to get title insurance, but when you're buying something at foreclosure or the courthouse steps, people don't always get title insurance or title search. So in a way, it's buyer be waiter. So when you buy something and there's a debt already established on that, and it came before the debt that's being foreclosed on, and the established debt goes with it.
Next part, we said so, does that mean we have, we still haven't come to some of the provisions to collect?
I think so, I need to look at the dates on it, and I should have brought it with me, and I apologize for not having. But I think that our lawsuit date was before foreclosure action day. But I will check and make sure of that and let Jose know tomorrow, if that's okay.
Great.
So, if, as long as the dates are right, I think we're good to go and then pursue the collection of our debt. Now, we have ten years from the date that the debt came on to bring a writ of execution to try to collect the debt, but I think that we're still good time-wise.
Well, this sounds promising.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mary. Other business. Tomorrow, anybody that is interested going, uh, Mayor Ploton and myself are going to, uh, West Jefferson with this block grant for Howden, we're gonna go.
See, see what.
See what, uh, the possibilities of that for, uh, Alagene or Sparta, uh, again. So I'm leaving here nine o'clock, and it's at ten o'clock in Ash County. If anybody would like to go, let me know when you drive to leave. And, uh, got that. Which brings us down to twelve public comment, if we got anybody who'd like to comment. Will you come in here, I thought you was gonna comment on the time.
I appreciate you, you know. That's my comment.
I'm asking for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Got a motion, need a second?
Second.
Second, I want a second. Four O, adjourn.